Yes, I'm sorry trustee.
Before, before we get to that slide, I just wanted to know, and I know I asked for this at P-12 as well, is there a way, and I don't, I'm not going to assume that you have that information now, in which we are able to tell, looking at Fortson, for example, the 86 and the 204 number, people, GPA below 2.0, is there a way that we can tell what percentage of these students come from our ELL programs or?
Yes, we believe that we can tell that to a certain, you know, extent, and I just received an email today from superintendent Malako, and so I'm partnering with him, I don't even think Becky knows this yet, but we're going to pull together, so Lori Slaber and Dean Ernst knows about it, we're going to pull together a little team and be able to disaggregate that for you, so you can see how those students are doing once they're here. What I would like to be able to do for you is to go further than their success and progression in ELI, but rather go a little bit more longitudinally and find out then, how does that transfer into their success in college-level courses within their fields?
And it'll be, and I know Dr. Malako's here when you're doing this, if there's a way that we can find out if that ELL student has been here for four years, or was this their, they only came to our Dearborn Public Schools for one year, for example, because if we have ELL students that are here ninth grade and the majority of them are still placing that low, then that's going to open up other conversations that we need to have. So when we are doing those numbers, let's, if we are getting those students, let's see how long they've been with Dearborn Public Schools.
Great, we'll have to work from there in both directions simultaneously, but I'm prepared to do that if, yeah, okay, very good.
Thank you.
Excellent, excellent suggestion. So what we wanted to do is take a look at how students do in their placements in math, reading, and writing, and here again, you can see that our Dearborn, Edsall, Ford, and Fortson High School students outperform the other high schools, of course, the other high schools' numbers are behemoth in comparison, but as you can see, large numbers are college-ready right from high school, which is just what we want to see, but we cannot ignore the fact that more students are showing as one level below college readiness. Now, that's not to be dismissed lightly, but it is to be understood in a national trend. So 62% of students across the United States of America are required to take at least one developmental course, and so we actually beat those odds here when you look at these pylons. The other things that we need to understand is that when we look at ACT scores, we again see scores that do not stand as healthily and ready for college as our Dearborn students do. So for example, 63% of students taking the ACT score qualify as ready in writing, but it falls to 49% in reading, which is a little bit strange that people do better in writing than they do in reading. Math is at 41%, and the place where students actually are the lowest in terms of being prepared to take college-level courses is actually in science. Nationally, only 37% of our students are ready for science at the college level, and yet that's where we see most of the high-need, high-skill jobs in the STEM area. So it's really challenging for all of us, certainly here, we have our challenges as well. Dr. Mead?
Could I have a definition of "level"?
Sure, so what this would mean at one level below would mean that the student has one developmental course to complete in order to take what we call the gateway course. So for English 131, that would be the gateway course, that's the college-level course that most students take. If they were not ready for that, they would place an O-93, or the ALP, which is an accelerated program that we have, which is, does phenomenally well, 85% of the students actually pass that, which is far beyond the success rate nationally, but they would have that one semester. What the ALP allows you to do in that semester is to make up any developmental work and in the same semester actually complete the college-level course, okay?
What's two levels?
Two levels would take you basically one complete academic year to simply meet the developmental requirements to earn the level that you need to take the college-level course. That would take you down into the O-80 range.
It used to be the, it used to be the O-88 class in writing, however financially this was, we can't offer that class because it was below the ninth-grade level, so what we've been doing is offering free literacy classes to allow those students to catch up and then eventually place into our O-93, which is one level.
Shamefully, what some community colleges have done is decided that they are no longer open-entry colleges, and while they say they're open-entry, they actually have literacy levels that are set that if a student does not actually score that way, they're not really allowed into college at all. And we've got to be very careful, we're not that college, this literacy program, I think, is definitely, you know, the way to go.
Trustee Amud.
And what's interesting about this as well is that, for example, two levels below, they have to take two semesters before they get to that class, those two semesters would not transfer to a four-year university.
Not on a college credit.
So what happens, so that course would not transfer, correct?
Those would not transfer.
They would not transfer towards their degree, which is also why a lot of times we see people not graduating in two years, because often they spend so much time taking classes just so they can get to the college-level classes that would transfer.
Right, and as we see, it's a minority of our students out of the Dearborn, but if you look down to the lower right, it's a lot, lot of students from especially the Detroit schools. Now, what we've done since we're looking at the math page here, so superintendent Malako knows this, and I want to thank again, I see Professor Jeff Morford back there, you know, when I got here a year and a half ago, one of the things I said, Jeff was in the room, Dean Gilliland was in the room, I said, "I want to put us out of the business of developmental mathematics," knowing that we really couldn't do that, but the challenge was, how do we get to these students that would need two or maybe one level before they actually get here at all and fix the remediation while they're still in high school? And we're finishing our first year of a pilot that is doing just that with students from all three of the Dearborn high schools, and what we're trying to do again is to identify the need while the student is still an 11th grader, they take a course that is basically an introduction to college mathematics, which takes care of that remediation in high school so that they come to us college-ready for math. So we have a really very good plan in place to address this.
Trustee Barry.
I'm going to follow up on trustee Amud's comments regarding Fortson. With all due respect to all the districts around us, I mean, I'm a little greedy, we're concerned about Dearborn, okay, those, I asked for the cohort for 2015 for a reason, because that's when we started seeing our graduation rates go up, but I'm sure I'll get a follow-up report on that. For 2013, Fortson High School, we're looking at 618 students?
This is an aggregate of 13, 14, 15, and 16, okay? So this is, this is four years of high school students.
But that's, okay, okay, I'll just use, over 50% of the students weren't ready to go into college-level reading. At the same time, they were offered to take classes in philosophy, political science, chemistry, where they weren't ready for college reading, correct?
Well, we are not, let me look over here really quick, because we're no longer really teaching the remedial reading courses.
We do offer the developmental reading courses, because we do have some students that need, we do have some students that need that slightly slower pace, particularly if they're coming out of our literacy program, but our ALP program actually takes the writing, the developmental writing, and the developmental reading and combines them into one class, so that when they leave in one semester, they have completed the college-level class, they have completed it successfully, and they are ready to do college-level work in any area.
Now, what we've, what we've done here, though, is brought that to scale at a level that none of the other community colleges have done. In other words, that's, that's our default now. The best practice nationwide is to allow the student then to enroll in the gateway course, which would be a Philosophy 131, a Sociology 131, you know, a 131 course. The real gem would be to have those courses linked to the ALP as a learning community, so that the same students are taking all of those courses, and maybe what it is that they're reading and writing about is sociology, so that these courses are helping to stand up the work that they're doing in Sociology 131. Henry Ford College, at least in the time that I've gotten to know it, does not have very many learning communities at all, and we just haven't really embraced that, but we do note it to be one of the high-impact practices, they're called, for really making that work. So we're at a point in time where I think we're ready to actually research those things and try to find, what are the vehicles that will better stand up our students so that in their first semester, while they're making up some ground over here, they're actually performing well in the, you know, the course that's contextualized.
And that would avoid the GPAs their first year.
That would probably do that.
Show them a little success.
That's my hope.
Let them hang on another year, where that's when you take.
Absolutely, absolutely, and I do think that, though, the, one of the great blessings we have, while others may talk not so kindly and say it's bizarre, others may be more kindly and say it's unique, I look at it and say, "It's a blessing that we can see things from a K-14 perspective." And really what we need to do is to set aside some service time to have the faculty at this college to be able to sit down and have those honest conversations with the faculty in the high schools, and to say, "There's really no shame or blame here, you're building a bridge to get the students to a certain place, we're building a bridge, but we expect the students to begin here, and these bridges aren't connecting, but we're one family, so if any district can solve for X, I think we can, but if we do it, we'll have a story to take on the road nationally, because everyone is struggling with this." But I do think that we can be the ones that solve it.
I like that attitude, nobody to blame, because we are, I mean, we just want some successful students, that's the end game.
Absolutely, absolutely.
That's the end game. And 2010, at this table, and I know trustee Lane was here, is when we started talking about graduation rates, then we took it over next month to, you know, the other side, K-12, and we started that discussion, look where we're at right now, so, thank you.
Very good, thank you.
Just to kind of backtrack a little bit with some of the conversation, what's considered
a passing grade to move out of the remedial courses?
A 2.0 at this college, yeah.
Okay, so with these, especially with math, now I know I had a daughter enrolled here, and she took everything but the math and science courses and walked away from here, a younger daughter, not, I at least got one through here successfully, but, but she was, she kind of circumvented her issues rather than tackling them head-on after she failed one course. And that being said, even taking a remedial course and getting a 2.0 in, like the math, does it really set you up for success then in the college-level entry math course, or are they still behind enough where they're still not going to see success?
Well, I would say that we are doing better now than I've seen any school that I've ever worked at do, in part because the question that we're asking before that is whether or not the next course even makes sense for this student. So this student coming from a developmental course may go on to the next step, which could be college algebra, but college algebra is the beginning of a journey to calculus. Your daughter may not have ever needed to be on a calculus pathway.
No, that's correct.
She may have been going into education, which would be a statistics pathway, or she may have been going into the humanities or the liberal arts, which would have been maybe a quantitative reasoning pathway. So what Professor Morford and, and, you know, Scott and Sam Bazey and what they're all doing is really making sure that we are delivering the right math at the right time, and that the students have the right math courses in their pathways that make sense, and that is making all the difference in the world in terms of their ability.
So we are looking at it differently now than the past?
Beyond looking at, we're paving those roads.
All right.
Yep, very good. So you've looked at the reading, and you can see our students do very well, I know that you looked at the writing, and again, very, very well, so math is the challenge, but math is where we've put a lot of our chips, and we're doing some excellent work there. So let me show you this slide, this may help a little bit, trustee Barry, I do know that Becky wanted me to share that she is diligently working on the exact nature of the query that you put to her, but if we look at this, take, I'll just grab, well, we were talking about Fortson, so I'll grab Fortson, it's a good story here. 613 students during this set of cohort years that would need to take any developmental course, and as you can see, a success rate of 80%, that is incredible, it's incredible. Understand that nationally, that is lower than 50%. So, so when you look at Dearborn, Edsall, and Fortson, the number of students who are taking a developmental course and succeeding in passing it outdistances most students, as you can see, the students from the other districts, 59%, is a little bit closer to the national average. So our success rate for these students is great. What I needed to see, however, was does that inform, and this is just what trustee Petlicoff was just talking about, does that inform in any way their success in the gateway college course? And so the next section took Math 110, after taking the developmental course says, "Did you pass a math course that would count towards your degree?" And as you look at that, you can see that the percentage of the students that were able to do that is still relatively high, so 77 to 84% of the students can actually do that. Here's the number, though, that I took away, you got to read this kind of slanty sideways to see it, and this is one that says to me, "We got some room to do." 613 students in Fortson needed to take a developmental math course, 494 of them passed it, super, but only 340 of them ended up taking Math 110. What does that tell you? That says that 154 students, this is what I don't get, 154 students took the hard developmental course, passed the hard developmental course, and stopped, they stopped, they didn't go on and take the college-level course, which is what we really wanted them to do, right? That's what we were rooting for, that's what we were priming them for, that's what we were trying to get them ready to do. So it says to me that we have some work to do, as students are coming to the end of a semester, where they're looking to pass a developmental course, we should be shooting all sorts of messages to them, "What can I do to get you registered in that Math 110 class, right? How can, how can we reach out to you? We want to keep your eyes on the prize, don't take some time off, math is something that you do better once you're on a roll, you are on a roll, we want to keep you there." All right, so this is the kind of stuff that sometimes data can tell us, that then makes it a little bit easier for us to better serve our students. This is phenomenal information, I decided to do a deep dive in, what percentage of our students come to Henry Ford College already with some college-level courses in their back pockets? And here you can see that Fortson outdistances the others with 65% of those students coming with some college transcript already founded. When I came here a year and a half ago, Dr. Jensen asked me what I thought that number should be, and I still stick with my answer, which is, I will be delighted when it's 75% across the board, because that would be like, everybody would want to live in Dearborn. We would be one of those cities of the top 50 cities in which you'd want to live if we could do it. But when I look at our students at Fortson, they're making that a reality, they're almost making that a reality. So getting to a place where students can do that, mind you, that is not just gen ed coursework. Going to college now is what you have to do in order to get a career in the professional trades. So when we say going to college now, we're not talking about something other than occupational. College is the gateway to the occupational world as well, so students could be doing that. Really very, this is a complicated slide, but it translates really very easily, we wanted to see what range our students fall into with regard to their ACT scores. Green is Fortson, you don't really have to know that, it's too much really to read in here, but what you can see is that we truly are the people's college, we truly are an open-entry college, we meet our students where they're at. So yes, we have the students that have the 23s and 24s on the ACTs, they could be at the four-year school of their choice, they could be and would be scholarship students, but we also have just as many who are in the 12 and 13-point range who need some, I'm going to say this word, they need some equity, all right? They need what we haven't been giving them all along that will actually help not only include them, but give them the uplift that they need in order to be successful at the college. Now, what that is, is something that I think we have to dig deep and discover. I'm not sure that we know exactly at this point in time what that is, though we're beginning to, I think, dig deep enough, we'll start to see the answers. Pell eligibility, this I wanted to show you because of a percentage that is really very scary. In the United States today, 89% of the students that come from low-income families, which makes up for a large percentage of students that enroll here at Henry Ford College, 89% across this great nation will leave school with no degree, no certificate, no credential, having spent six years at the two-year school. So if you're low-income, 89% chance you're leaving us after six years with nothing to show for it, but not with our Dearborn students. As we look at these numbers, Fortson, 80% are Pell eligible, 65% basically on average between the other two schools, or if we look at it in an aggregate, probably someplace around 72% of our students are Pell eligible. That is high, that means we are, I hate to ever use the word "at risk," but it means we are a deserving learning community and one that needs financial assistance from the state and federal government, but that means the odds are stacked against us from doing as well as we're doing, and yet we continue to do well. And as you can see, shell out almost $50 million in aid for students coming from the three Dearborn schools. Credits at the time that the student actually transfers, right, we're rounding third base and heading for home. This is an important one for me, this says to me, "Just how close did you get when you decided it was time to up and leave?" And so I'm interested not so much in the average total credits, but the average credits that you passed while you were here, and as you look at that, you can see that it's about 50. Now remember, it only takes 60 credits to make an associate's degree, so many of our students leave within one semester of actually completing the associate degree. That's actually a lie, because if we disaggregate what they've taken, their 50 credits are not always in the right place in order to add up to a degree, but with guided pathways and the work that we've done over the last year and a half, it's becoming harder and harder for students to make those kinds of mishaps. So it's actually working out very, very well. Again, we've kind of sharpshuted our way to trying to find out what pieces they're leaving on the table and asking ourselves how we can redesign what we're doing in order to make up the difference and to get the students to actually complete. One way to do this is something that I'm calling "success in 60," it's taking all of our degrees that are AA degrees, setting them at a maximum of 60 credits, so that we don't charge 68, 72, and keep our students here much longer. It's 30 credits in the MTA, 15 credits in the essential coursework within the major, 15 credits of electives, and you're on your way out the door. So we're trying to redefine what an associate of arts degree could mean from a community college, so that it better block transfers to the, to the four-year schools. If we can actually make this work, and I do believe that we can, we'll cinch up getting all these people to completions. So the last question of the day was, where do they go? Where do they go? And so here you can see, Dearborn High School students love going next door when they're done with us to UMD, Edsall Ford students love going to UMD when they're finished with us, Fortson hasn't even split, they like Wayne State University just as much, and when we look at the other schools, you start seeing some things that actually are true of Dearborn as well. In other words, you start seeing hundreds of students leaving us and going to Wayne County Community College, or Schoolcraft College, or Oakland Community College. These are head-scratchers. Why would a student ever leave a two-year school to go to a two-year school? Why would you ever leave the two-year school for which you pay in district tuition to go to a two-year school that is going to charge you out of district tuition? Well, remember for us, 70% of our students are already out of district, so when you get down to those others, it, not a shock that 608 transferred from us to Wayne County, because they're really Wayne students to begin with. The question is, what happened while they were here that made them decide to go back? That's what we need to start drilling ourselves down to. What I think from my soft drilling happens here is that these are students that have already finished usually two years with us, and now they're transferring. In two years, they've also probably moved out of mom and dad's house. So what's happened in a lot of these cases, they've come to school, they've grown up a little bit, they're finding some independence, they want to move out, and they really can't afford to live in Dearborn, so they make that move, but they make their move to other locations in Wayne County, which then makes them actually out of district for us, but in district for Wayne County Community College, and it makes sense for them financially to maybe think of that move. But if you add this up, we're talking about, you know, several thousand students, and it would be very wise of us to try to get to understand this story a little bit better and to be able to serve these students as well. So that's what I like to call basically a student's success profile, does any one student look like all of that? No, but the students do like this, and they number in the hundreds. They are what make us proud, they are what keep us true to our mission of transforming lives and building better futures, but they're also here to remind us that our work is not done, there is room for improvement, and I'm glad to say that this college understands the importance of continuous improvement, and with Dr. Herbst on board now, he and I look forward to being able to identify more of these gaps and close them. Thank you, any other questions?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
From the other group that are going to Wayne County Community College, are there courses that students can take at Wayne County that transfer to four years that we don't have?
Very few.
Or don't transfer?
No, very few. Sometimes, I hate to say this, there's, there is less of a culture of rigor at some of these other colleges, so a student may attempt a gateway course here, and we challenge them, we ask them to rise to the standard of being a college student, they did so, they might have gotten a 1.5, they could turn around and take that same course at Wayne County, where I'll just say that, you know, the quality and the standards are a little bit different, that their chances of succeeding, at least on paper, are greater. What the student will be able to actually do is questionable, but no, there are not, there is not a tremendous difference really between the programming. Schoolcraft, on the other hand, I would point out, there is a real reason for students to transfer from us to Schoolcraft, anyone in policing, for example, the police academy is at Schoolcraft, okay? Yeah. Does anyone have something to add? Okay, thanks.
Trustee Hamud.
Thank you, Dr. Mead, and thank you, Dr. Neil, and thank you, Becky, as well, I know that this took a lot of work and analyzing and so on, so thank you. But I do have a question specifically as to guided pathways and our strategic plan. When we see some of these numbers, as in the students that took any developmental math and then didn't take the 110 after that, when will we start seeing some data you think that we can assess to see if our guided pathways, when it comes to completing some of the essential courses here at HFC, when do you think we can start, or have we seen any, anything in terms of improvement with our new guided pathways?
Yeah, so we have seen most of the improvement in the time that I've been here in our career areas, because those guided pathways were much easier to create in terms of the course sequencing, and what courses students needed to take, in what order, in order to move successfully through the program. A great example would be nursing, and so some of the strides that And so some of the strides that we've made in nursing just over the last year due to what they call CHAMPs, which was their approach to guided pathways, is really outstanding. Could you give us an idea of the percentages that you've seen in terms of student completion or NCLEX exam pass rates?
NCLEX exam rate's about twenty percent of last year.
So to make a twenty percent jump in one year is just almost unheard of. So we know it's working. Where it's slower is in the more traditional transfer areas. And one of the problems with that, not, it's not a problem with that, but it's just that if you wanted to major in sociology at Henry Ford College, you can't do that. We don't have an associate of arts degree in sociology. We don't have an associate of arts degree in political science. We don't have an associate of arts degree in English literature. What success in sixty would do would be to allow those things to occur. And because they could occur, we can now engage faculty in, well, what would the five essential courses in that fifteen-credit box look like? And be able to start moving students on those trajectories. The next three years, this year included, in the Michigan statewide push for guided pathways, is all focused on the redesign of advising. So I kind of doubt that the activities that the MCCA have us engaged with right now are going to see an impact on student success from the standpoint of the curriculum mapping piece. But much of our curriculum mapping is done, so I think that they're wise to look at the way we support students on the pathway, to remain on the pathway, that will actually help move forward. So we're doing the right things. I would say, we probably still have two to three years before we see data that's going to make us feel confident.
Thank you.
Yep.
Trustee Lane.
Dr. Mead, I'd like to ask you to put this on the agenda for the P-12. I don't know whether it's going to be on, but I'm thrilled with this, and I'm particularly excited because it's a time when the public discourse is that public education is failing, that we need to privatize everything. Of course, that's without saying that there are private profits in testing and so on and the student loan collections, et cetera, et cetera. Anybody that watched Betsy DeVos maybe would be aware of that, a week or so, go on Sixty Minutes. But I think we should be screaming this from the rooftops. It's vindication of the college and the, and the district's work, and it's work that's taken place over a long, long time. So I do have this question particularly about math, but it would apply probably as well to science or English or whatever. When do we give the students the placement test? Is that in August, for example, or July?
So do we have student supports, I mean, student services people here?
If you're around.
Yeah, we do.